All right. Good evening, Commissioners, and over to you, Chair Harrington.
Good morning, every-- good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Tuesday, June 27, 2023 Washington County Board of Commissioners meeting. Clerk Moss, could you do the announcements and roll call, please?
Thank you, Chair Harrington. The Washington County Board of Commissioners, also meeting as the Board of Directors of Clean Water Services and all other county services, is now meeting this regular session, June 27, 2023. Commissioner Treese?
Here.
Commissioner Fai?
Present.
Commissioner Willie?
Here.
Vice Chair Rogers?
Here.
Chair Harrington?
Here. Okay, a few announcements on the agenda. Item 13 was added to the consent agenda, so tonight's consent agenda consists of 13 items. We also, since the agenda was first published, added a third item to the public hearings. That is to approve the resolution and order to adopt the fiscal year 2023-2024 Washington County Fee Schedule. Excuse me. This evening, we have a total of three public hearings and seven different action items. Just so that everyone in the audience knows, if you come and provide public comment during the public comment period, but it is referencing an ordinance, which I think we only have one ordinance on the action item, tonight, we're only doing the first reading. The second reading and public hearing will be held at a future meeting. You can still testify tonight, and it will be on the public record for this evening's meeting, but it will not be part of the public record for that ordinance. Nonetheless, we will still be hearing your remarks. So, thank you. Okay. For tonight, we have our public comment period at the beginning of the meeting. That is an opportunity for members of our community to speak to us for two minutes per individual. And by our rules of procedure, we ordinarily just have 10 minutes total for that. And then we have our second public comment period at the end of the meeting, which is five minutes long. But this is the point where I do two things. First, I'm going to ask Clerk Moss how many people we have signed up for the first public comment period.
Madam Chair, we have eight people signed up.
Okay, we have eight people signed up. In addition, Ms. Angie has an announcement to make.
Thank you, Chair Harrington, and thank you, community members, for being here this evening. This morning, we received questions to our board clerk, Clerk Moss, asking how to testify at our board meetings. One of the requests that we received this morning was for translation services. We do request a 24-hour notice for translation interpretation services, excuse me, at our board meetings. The reason why is because we have a contract with an interpreter, and I just want to express appreciation for our interpretation services this evening and being able to accommodate this request today. So for members of our public, I want to reiterate, if you need interpretation services for Board of Commissioner meetings, please contact the county administration office, our board clerk, at least 24 hours in advance, so that we can ensure those services are available for you. Clerk Moss, can you please walk through information on our website on how the public can access?
Thank you, Commissioner Angie. As you can see on the screen in front of you, this is our how-to testify, how-to guide, and this explains all the ways that we accept public comment and testimony from the public, in person, in writing, virtual, any way that the board can hear your opinions on the matters important to you. So if you're testifying in person, just say, most of you came here tonight, you've signed in on the sign-in sheet, and I will call your name, one, two at a time, to come up and provide comment for up to two minutes at the beginning of this meeting here. At the end of the meeting, if anyone signs up, that'll be for five minutes, that you'll have an opportunity on any county-related topic. Some of you may wish to provide testimony in writing to us. We ask that, in order for it to be considered by the board, that you try to get it to us no later than 2:00 p.m. on the Monday before the Tuesday meeting, so that way, we can get it in front of the board, so they can see your thoughts and actions before they deliberate on an item. Our public communication guidelines, as the Chair illustrated at the beginning of the meeting, each person will have up to two minutes to provide comments on the topic. So you'll have a timer in front of you that has two minutes on it, and once your time is expired, I will let you know, so we can get to the next person, so we can accommodate for everyone.
Clerk Moss, can I just ask you a favor to slow down in support of our interpreter? And I will be giving our board or staff that reminder to slow down if needed.
Yes, I will. I'll get closer. Thank you. Yeah. So when speaking to the board, we do ask that you testify respectfully and adhere to the time limits. You support the rights of others and express opinions that may be different from yours. And then, if you have any handouts or written copies, that you please provide to me up here, so I can give to the board and keep for our public record. So we do ask the members that are in the audience, that you listen respectfully and quietly, that you refrain from any disruptive behavior, and that video cameras and recordings are allowed, but we just do ask that they do not block anyone's view of the meeting. So, and that is the-- does anyone have any questions about what I've--
Clerk Moss, if I could?
Yes.
You have full access to this document. If you go to the Washington County website, washingtoncountyor.gov, and you choose Board of Commissioners on the menu, and you go to our Board of Commissioners page, you'll see our bright shining faces on that webpage. But over on the right-hand side, there's a column of information items, and one of them is how to testify. When you click on that, it gives you this document that Clerk Moss had just taken us through. So that's how you find this information on our website.
Thank you, Chair Harrington. And with the-- we're gonna do our Spanish interpretation first, for those who need the interpretation. So first two that I call are Emma Aguilar and Hector Aguilar. You'd like to come forward?
I'll be speaking in English.
All right. Please go ahead for up to two minutes.
I'm here today to speak on the homeless pods the county has decided to put on Fourth Avenue in Cornelius. On page nine of the Washington County Community Guidelines, Expanding Shelter Programs with Equity, it states, "Shelter programs will not be concentrated in low-income or neighborhoods where a high percentage of communities of color reside to prevent undue burden. This site is not at the entrance of a rich or middle-class neighborhood. It's a mobile home park, low-income neighborhood. Placing the homeless pods here devalues the homes of those who are already struggling, and it contributes to a cycle of poverty." According to the latest U.S. Census data, Cornelius is nearly 51% Hispanic. Many of its Latino residents reside densely in and around this site. Placing the site here diminishes what little wealth the Hispanic community has been able to create in the few generations we have been here. There are many Latino-owned homes and small businesses in this area. So this brings to the table the intersectionality of the decision to place the site here, in an area where many of its residents would likely not have the time, knowledge, or power to have an influence on these decisions. We simply want the equity in shelter placement that was promised to us. This behavior of saying one thing and doing the opposite, whether intentional or not, breaks bonds of trust the community has in its government. This is not about NIMBY. This is about the fact that Washington County has and should continue to be on the forefront of equitable development. Ask yourselves, are these the moral standards that Washington County should stand for? Is this how Washington County ought to be doing things? Thank you.
Could you please state your name for the record?
My name's Emma Aguilar.
Thank you. Hector Aguilar, you're next.
Hey, my name's Hector Aguilar. Emma's actually my sister. I just want to say that we went around, we-- I have personally knocked on between 50 to 80 doors, and although the crowd right now doesn't necessarily represent that community, we were hoping more people would come out here. But as you guys know, life happens, and people are working. I was barely able to get here from work in Portland, but based on my experiences and the conversations that I've had with the people in the neighborhood, there's-- I didn't come across one person that was happy about the pods or had anything positive to say about it, because it seemed to be conflicting with either their, in some way, their livability in the area, their safety, as far as they're concerned for their own safety, their property's safety, their kids' safeties. I don't know if you guys are aware of this, but kindergarten through high school, the bus stops for all of those grades, all those age groups, are literally on that same street as where the pods are going to be. And I know a lot of parents were very concerned about that. I've worked in law enforcement for the past seven years, so I, I kind of know what that population can bring to an area, especially in a more condensed space like that. These pods are gonna be directly in between some residential housing, a huge trailer park on one end, a huge trailer on the other side. So like Emma was saying, they're, you know, low income. A lot of them don't speak Spanish. A lot of people that I, or don't speak English and speak Spanish, a lot of people that I came across, they had no idea this was going on. And when I, you know, told them about it, they were very worried about it and concerned. It also affects, there's a house right across the street and others in the neighborhood that are trying to sell now, and they're having a hard time, because people are finding out that there's a homeless pod. So again, real estate, as I'm sure a lot of us in here know, that are in higher positions, that make higher income, that's how people create generational wealth. And this low-income and minority population is now gonna be kind of screwed over by these pods. So, thank you.
Thank you. And next, we have Adam Marcia and Yishan Singh.
Adam, please go first.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Madam Chair. Commissioners, my name is Adan Meresias, and I'm a resident of Cornelius. And I'm here tonight for the same reason, to talk about the houseless community, the shelter pods that are gonna be placed in Cornelius. My concern comes from the lack of information, the lack of outreach to the community. I think that there's this misconception about the houseless community. I work as a community help worker. I'm also a social worker. So I've done work around the houseless community in the past. And my concern is about just informing the community. And I think there's this misconception and misrepresentation about how this community sort of acts, or, you know, when it's placed in, within the boundaries of a city. And my concern is that a lot of information has not been passed. And also, I would like, you know, to be able to get more information to our community, to make sure that those questions are answered, and primarily because I'm more concerned about the fact that people are viewing this community as a threat and as an issue that's gonna be affecting our community from everything we've seen, right? I think Portland has implemented laws, has passed, you know, certain things that affect this community. Hillsborough has done it, Beaverton has done it, I think pretty much everywhere else. So they're pushing them as far as they can, Cornelius, Forest Grove, and I think even to the coast, if that's how people like wanna get to it. And my concern is that, you know, if that's something that the county decided, if that's something that open door decided, I think it's worth, you know, informing the community, having those questions answered. But I think a lot of what I've seen is just a lack of outreach, where is where I'm primarily coming from. I think I'm concerned that our community's not being informed. And I think my concern comes from the fact that there's gonna be a negative reaction. It's already happening. And there's gonna be, you know, a reaction that could result into something we don't want to see, and that's unfortunate. But I think we need more information and more outreach. Thank you.
All right. For the record, my name is Yishan Sina. I'm speaking kind of as a private citizen as to why we should not build the pods in this area. First of all, thank you so much for allowing this time to listen and to hear our thoughts. I first want to say that we definitely need to support and address homelessness. It's very important that we provide resources for homeless people. It's just that we really need to make sure that we're doing that in an equitable way. The first observation I'd like to make is that mitigation is non-unique, meaning that you can mitigate in any community where you're building a pod, but at the same time, so is NIMBY. You can say NIMBY anywhere. So that's one observation I want to make, is mitigation and NIMBY is non-unique. So I'll provide a few compelling, unique reasons as to why you shouldn't build the pods here. Number one, it violates the standards of the Supporting Houses Services document of the Washington County, particularly that it will, that you will not build it in a place that is centered in low-income or minority areas, and this is one of those places. I think that there are a lot of other places that you could build it that are, would be a little bit more expensive, but it just, that's the biggest thing that it violates. And the second thing, kind of building on what you as well said, is lack of communication. From a town hall that happened a few weeks ago, it was revealed that, that this is not gonna be just a temporary shelter, that it's also, there's the long-term ambition of it being a long-term access center. But in all of the marketing materials and all of the things that were distributed and marketed, it's this idea that it's just gonna be temporary. And that also violates another guideline of the Supporting Houses Service document, which is that it is going to be, you know, transparent communication and equitable communication. And it also kind of feels like a Trojan horse, where you're saying it's, you know, temporary, you know, to get it in there, but once it's there, it's much easier to build a permanent shelter. And I think that kind of violates the first reason of that it's, that it's, that it's like, it's centered in low-income areas. So, and to conclude, please research other sites to see if there's more viable actions and reconsider the long-term intentions of the site. Thank you for your time, and we need to support homeless people, but we need to make the right steps every step of the way. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, Madam Chair, we have Blaine Ackley and Kim Marshall. All right. Go ahead, Blaine.
Okay. Good evening, Madam Chair Harrington and members of the Commission. My name is Blaine Ackley. My wife and I have lived in Hillsborough for 32 years. In that time, we have seen enormous changes and growth. I'm appearing before you this evening to share with you that the Washington County we know and love has the dubious distinction as the most lead-contaminated location in the state of Oregon. The Hillsborough Airport is the eighth-most lead-contaminated airport in the country out of 20,000 other airports. Those are facts. You know the facts about lead. That is evidence that you have before you. This fall, the EPA is expected to issue a finding that lead in any amount is a danger to public health. New regulations will follow. Why not take this opportunity to help educate the voters and the children that you represent about the dangers of lead by joining the EPA, the CDC, and HUD, the Department of Housing and Urban Development, in recognizing and proclaiming October 22nd to 28th as National Lead Poisoning Prevention Week? I am providing you with a draft proclamation, proclamation for your vote as soon as possible on this. Now, let's look at the proposed proclamation you have before you. The proclamation says that there are four clauses that describe the toxicity of lead, and then the following reads that the Washington County will join this National Lead Poisoning Prevention Week and proclaim that as the Lead Poisoning Prevention Week here in Washington County. Now's the time to take the stand and help make our city and our county much more livable for all of us. Thank you.
Good evening, Council. Kim Marshall with Project Homeless Connect. I'm the Executive Director of Project Homeless Connect. Two things tonight, and I'm probably gonna come back for five minutes. First one is time, place, manner. Just wanted to thank you for your careful consideration, compassionate consideration around this ordinance that was kind of just put on everyone's plates, and then cities and the county needed to do what they needed to do. So we are trying to be incredibly supportive and also strategic in what we're gonna be doing. So here in Hillsborough, the ordinance goes till 7:00 a.m., so we will be opening our day center at 7:00 a.m. moving forward to alleviate that gap between where you can be. We want to be solutions-based, so thank you for that. The other piece is this issue around--
Can I interrupt the speaker, please? I'm sorry. Can you just slow down a bit for our interpreter?
I would love to say yes, but--
Yes, yes.
I tried. Shelter siting, I mean, the cross-section of making decisions and community engagement is difficult for you. And what we know, what we have proven for the last two years through Supportive Housing Services, is the more places that we can engage our friends and bring them into a managed site, like pods or shelter, or the shelters coming in Hillsborough and Beaverton, our day center, our outreach teams, the better opportunity we have then to move them to housing. And our little agency is on the cusp of moving its 100th friend into housing, and we are so excited about that. So it's the ability to have shelter sites and to have new resources, like increasing our case management. We are at 12 case managers, and it's our jam. Housing is our jam. And the best way to do that is to have managed sites, if that's pods, shelters, campsites, RV parks, safe parking, so that we can engage in our friends in a meaningful way and start that conversation around housing. I know these are difficult decisions for you, and I do not envy your position. Please know that those of us doing direct service with our homeless friends appreciate the time and energy being put into this, and any opportunity we could build capacity, whatever that looks like, including a pod village, is really important to the success of our friends in getting them off our streets and reducing that visualization of homelessness in our county.
Thank you. Next two we have up are Mike Barnes and Andrea D'Amico.
Hello, I'm Miki Barnes. Thank you for this opportunity to offer comments. And I live in Banks, Oregon. I want to endorse Blaine Ackley's testimony. I fully support a proclamation in honor of Lead Poisoning Prevention Week sponsored by the EPA, CDC, and HUD from October 22nd to 28th of 2023. There are now multiple peer-reviewed studies involving over 500 airports and more than a million children. All provide compelling evidence that children living in the vicinity of airports that service piston-engine aircraft are at elevated risk of lead exposure and poisoning. It is important to note that the airports included in these studies were below the National Ambient Air Quality Standards for lead. Nonetheless, children living in proximity to these facilities were found to have elevated blood lead levels. Research also indicates that children, African-Americans, people of color, and low-wealth communities are disproportionately impacted by airport lead emissions. It's no mistake that Hillsborough is one of the most diverse cities in the state, and Washington County, one of the most diverse counties, are also the most lead-polluted. That is troubling, very, very troubling. An August 2021 lead study commissioned by Santa Clara County in response to concerns about lead emissions generated by aviation activity at Reed Hillview Airport, found that children living that, near that airport, tested positive for elevated blood lead levels. In the words of Sammy Zaran, an expert researcher on that study, quote, "The Flint water crisis, from start to finish, unfolded in less than a year and a half. By contrast, at Reed Hillview, the release of lead into the lived environment is a continuous, nonstop, daily, unabated flow of an undeniably harmful toxicant." I remind you that we're talking about more than 1,000 pounds of lead released annually on nearby populations.
Thank you, Ms. Barnes.
Thank you.
Just a concluding remark. Reed Hillview ranks 34th in the country in lead emissions. Hillsborough 8th.
Thank you.
This is a serious, serious issue.
We have your letter. Thank you.
Hi. On a quick side note, I was here a couple of weeks ago to talk--
Would you name first?
Oh, I can start with my speech. I'll go back to my side note later. Washington County Board of Commissioners and Chairman of the Board, my name is Andrea D'Amico, and I'm a member of the STOP 882 Alliance. And while ordinance 882 does not come up for vote until October, I just wanted to take a moment to, to give you a quick email, or a quick update. I have an email from Mr. Warren from the city of Tigard I would like to read to you. It says, "Hi, Andrea. I want to ensure that you know that the city of Tigard is not proposing anything for tile-flat road, except to accommodate the county's road if it moves forward. Our position has always been that we do not need the road extension, but are willing to accommodate it, provided there is adequate study showing that the benefits outweigh the cost of its construction and impacts. This is not to say there would not be roads constructed in River Terrace 2. The city is proposing to extend Mountainside Way down to Bull Mountain within River Terrace 2 neighborhood. However, we are not proposing a roadway connection in lands outside the urban growth boundary. That is outside our authority and is a county-initiated plan. Thanks, Mr. Warren." Also, River Terrace 2 Planning Committee meetings are not until late 2023, early 2024, probably after your vote in October. Plus, I checked with Metro and was told that building a road across land outside the urban growth boundary would require state approval. When we spoke with the Department of Land Conservation and Development, we were told there would have to be a goal exception, which requires in-depth analysis and a number of studies before the goal exception can happen. I realize the county has spent valuable time and funds on this ordinance, but why spend more with all of these hurdles? I know you guys have a lot of other issues as county commissioners, but this, this ordinance affects our day-to-day lives. So please keep us in mind, collaborate with the city of Tigard in the expansion of Mountainside Way, and vote no on 882. And thanks for your time.
Thank you, Andrea. All right. That concludes the sign-up list. Did I miss anyone in the audience that wishes to testify on any county-related topic for up to two minutes? Not seeing any hands or anyone come forward. We will do online. Would any member online like to provide comments for up to two minutes on any county-related topic? We have one hand. Jenna Trust? Jenna, can you hear us?
Yes, I can. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Please go ahead for up to two minutes.
Hi, my name is Jenna Trust. I've given testimony before. I was at the meeting yesterday at Reedville Elementary with what I think was over-- I was at the meeting yesterday at Reedville Elementary with what I think was over 100 very concerned residents about the pod shelter in Aloha. Same issues you heard earlier today from the Cornelius residents. Communication has just been so awful. We had a whole new layer of people who didn't know about this, which led to a very unruly meeting that had to disperse within the first 15 minutes, and really nothing got accomplished. So your communications on this need to be better if you want any cooperation or support on that end. We, many of the neighbors, at least for the Aloha location, have asked to put together a letter in order to put preference towards women being preferred in the shelter or village in our area to help feel safer about them. So we are planning a meeting with Jen Larson, and we would like the Commissioner's support in that as well. There are also several residents that are still not wanting this at all and would prefer a better location, and like evidence that there have been any considerations for other locations, and it wasn't just a, I raised a hand and church got to have their first pick at having this at their location, because right now it feels like there was no other work done to cite a location. That being said, on time, place, and manner, I know that that's being talked about later today. Having this village three houses down from myself and in this neighborhood, having Hartwood Commons just down the road, and only having a 500-foot stipulation in time, place, and manner, still feels very close, and like we will be somewhat flooded, especially with a five-day allowance, whereas in Beaverton, it's 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., or, sorry, those hours, and in Portland, it's 8:00 p.m. to 8:00 a.m. So I'm unsure why we're not following those hours, and if I misunderstood how that was written, I apologize, but if I did misunderstand it, please enlighten me, and if I didn't, I would love to know why, and why we can't follow suit with Portland and Beaverton. Thank you.
Thank you, Jenna. All right, we'll give one last call for anyone else online that likes to provide comment for any county-related topic for up to two minutes, and I'll remind everyone else that we do have the five minutes at the end of the meeting, and we do have some signed up there, Madam Chair. Not seen any additional hands.
Thank you, Clerk Moss. So we've heard many different viewpoints tonight, and I just want to spend a few minutes for us to do our part to continue to evangelize what we're doing, why it's important, and how we're going about it. I think we could all agree that none of us want to see homeless individuals in our community. We have been working very hard to ensure that homelessness in Washington County is both rare and brief. Our team has, thanks to funding made available by the voters, has been working hard on expanding our shelter sites for over two and a half years. If you go to the Washington County website, that's washingtoncountyor.gov, and search for homelessness and housing, you'll come to a webpage. You could find it washingtoncountyor.gov/housing/shelters. And this provides you with a really great overview of the different kinds of shelters that our staff has been working hard to host throughout the Washington County community. That includes bridge shelters, congregate shelters, alternate shelters, youth shelters, and winter and severe weather shelters. We even have a map of where we have such shelters existing, as well as those in the works all throughout Washington County, from as far south as Tigard and Tuallaton, all the way up through Beaverton, Aloha, Hillsborough, Cornelius, and Forest Grove. We have also been working on expanding the toolset that are, that we have at our disposal to manage camping. We learned a lot during the COVID pandemic, where the CDC asked us to support homeless encampments in place and ensure that people had access to vaccinations, medical care, other means such as sanitation to support public health. Well, as we all know, the pandemic is no longer an emergency at our national level. We learned a lot through the homeless encampment program that we had in place for over two years. And now, in order to ensure that we're doing our part to manage unsanctioned camping in our community, we need to do at least two more things. We need to ensure that we have more places, more shelters for people who need such shelter to go to. Secondly, if we don't want people camping on sidewalks or on other public rights of way, we need to put in the appropriate laws and codes in place to ensure people are clear that they're not allowed to camp in these public places, on public properties, and under what circumstances. Recent court direction has required all jurisdictions, whether you're a city or a county, to put in place such regulations to make it clear, time, place, and manner. And this is where proposed ordinance 896 comes into play, and it's on our agenda for later, and I believe we're going to have as part of the first read a presentation tonight. Yes, a presentation tonight on that. I want to be clear, we've heard some people being a little confused, thinking that this is an ordinance about how we're allowing camping. No, it's basically the reverse, but stay tuned. In order for that to work, we have to have more shelter spaces in order to enforce that ordinance, and that's where an additional shelter type of pod, safe pod villages, comes into play. We currently have two location proposals, one as sponsored by the Aloha United Methodist Church, and the other through Open Door in Cornelius. Washington County is in a position of supporting those two organizations. I would like to encourage everyone, but especially the folks who have come and shared thoughts with us about Cornelius, who have mentioned their concern about community engagement. Congratulations, you're right at the beginning. You haven't missed anything, because we're only getting started. So what we have in place are community meetings where we first start, oh, you can see it displayed behind me, where we start with notifying nearby neighbors, and that may be how some of you are hearing about it now. Then we follow up with an information and a listening session. We've had that already with the Aloha United Methodist Church proposal, and it's coming up with Cornelius on this next Wednesday, June 28th. Then our team gathers that information, works with other partners to begin forming what we call a neighborhood plan. This is about how things will work at the pod village and try to address community concerns. From there, there's another community meeting where a draft neighborhood plan is shared. Our team had one such meeting last night with the community members with regard to the Aloha United Methodist Church Pod Village. Our team does additional work after that second meeting, and then follows up with another community meeting. You can find out more about this on the shelter, the, excuse me, the Safe Rest Pod Village webpage right on the Washington County website. All you have to do is go to washingtoncountyor.gov and search Safe Rest or Pods to go to that page. So I hope that some of this information has been useful to you tonight. We are in appreciation for your comments tonight. It helps inform us, and it also helps inform our team. Thank you very much. And with that, we'll move on with our consent agenda. Tonight's consent agenda consists of 13 items, one set of minutes, five items from Clean Water Services, two items from Support Services, one item from Housing Services, one from Health and Human Services, one from County Administration, and two from Land Use and Transportation. What are the wishes of the Commission regarding tonight's consent agenda?
We'll for approval as you have modified the agenda.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor of adopting tonight's consent agenda, please vote by raising your hand or saying aye. Thank you, Commissioners. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously 5 to 0. Excuse me. Next, we're moving on to public hearings. I'll just give the audience a few minutes to exit our room. Our first public hearing tonight comes to us from Clean Water Services with regard to forming the Bull Mountain Road Sewers, Sanitary Sewer Reimbursement District. And tonight, I'd like to welcome Mr. Andy Braun from Clean Water Services to first give us a staff presentation.
Chair Harrington and members of the board, my name is Andy Braun, Systems Planning Division Manager at Clean Water Services. This evening's first public hearing is to receive and consider testimony, excuse me, prior to formation of the Bull Mountain Road, Nummarnick to Rochac Road Sanitary Sewer Reimbursement District. This CWS project is on Bull Mountain Road between Nummarnick Drive and Rochac Road and is within the Bull Mountain Community Plan. It was initiated by one of the owners to provide public sanitary sewers to unserved properties in the neighborhood. The project will serve four approximately one-half acre properties, each developed with a single-family residential structure. Approximately half the length of the sewer extension is considered off-site, with the cost being absorbed by Clean Water Services. The other half of the project fronts the four benefited properties and is considered the qualifying project. The cost of the qualifying project is estimated to be $189,655 and is proposed to be divided equally among the four properties. The estimated cost for each lot is $47,414. The reimbursement charge is payable by the owner of the benefiting lot at the time of connection to the sewer. Properties that connect within one year of sewer availability will be eligible for an early connection incentive and to finance their private plumbing costs. The owners do not have a time requirement in which to connect. Interest on any unpaid reimbursement charge will accrue at 2.5% to 6% annually, commencing at the adoption of final reimbursement charges. Staff has shared information about the reimbursement districts, and the specifics of this project is detailed in the engineering report with the owners through mailings and three neighborhood meetings held virtually. One owner circulated the neighborhood petition and attended all three meetings. A second owner signed the petition and attended one information meeting. The other two owners have been unresponsive to the outreach efforts. We learned today that one of these two properties changed ownership within the last week. Following receipt of the testimony, the board will consider adoption of the resolution and order forming the reimbursement district and authorizing CWS to commence detailed engineering and construction. This concludes the staff report. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Commissioners, directors, with Clean Water Services, we're the Board of Directors versus Commissioners, so I use the two interchangeably. Do any of you have any questions? I just have one. I just want to verify that the proposal is for a reimbursement district, and I just want to make sure, does the incentive to connect still apply for the reimbursement district?
Yes.
Okay, great. All right. Thank you very much for clarifying that for me. All righty. Well, with the staff report done, I'd like to open the public hearing. Clerk Moss?
Thank you. Chair Harrington, I did not see anyone sign up for this public hearing. Would anyone in our audience wish to provide testimony for up to two minutes on this public hearing, as you've heard the presentation from staff? Not seen anyone come forward. Would any members online viewing this meeting like to provide comment for up to two minutes on this public hearing from Clean Water Services? Give you a moment, just a moment to utilize raise hand function? Not seen any hands. Chair Harrington.
All right. With that, we'll close tonight's public hearing on this matter, and I'd like to ask for a motion to adopt the resolution and order to form the Bull Mountain Road, Nummarnick, Rochac, 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 thank you, Commissioner Rogers, Sanitary Sewer Reimbursement District, and authorize staff to proceed with project number 7,251. So moved?
Sure.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please vote by raising your hand or saying aye. Thank you, Commissioners. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously 5 to 0. Next, we'll move on to a land use and transportation item, and this is to consider the annexation of six tax lots and right-of-way totaling three acres to the Tuallaton Hills Park and Recreation District. So I would like to welcome our staff for a presentation.
Madam Chair, can I say something before that starts?
Yeah.
I just saw our attorney for Clean Water Service leave, and I think this is his last meeting. He's leaving on Friday, retiring, and Jerry's out in the hall. I don't know if he's even listening, but thank you for the years of service, so.
Yes.
I'm sorry to interrupt you.
We had, we had a fun, fun dinner this evening to recognize his years of service as the first General Counsel for Clean Water Services. Thank you. Go ahead.
Thank you. Good evening, Chair Harrington and Commissioners. I'm Brian Robb, Associate Planner with Land Use and Transportation, and I'll be giving a brief presentation on proposed boundary change 23-001. Sort of a poor map, but it's just meant to depict the general area of the six properties north of US 26 in the unincorporated area of the county, and all of the properties are located within the urban growth boundary. This proposal is a request by Tuallaton Hills Park and Recreation District, representing five property owners, to annex six tax lots and right-of-way totaling approximately three acres into THPRD. And this request was initiated by a consent petition from the property owners. So THPRD runs a voluntary annexation program where property owners are allowed to voluntarily come into their district, and they apply through the county semi-annually. County staff has reviewed this request and found that it meets the criteria for boundary changes as outlined in the staff report. And staff recommends that the board conduct the public hearing, and at the conclusion of the hearing, adopt the resolution and order approving the annexation becoming effective immediately. With that, I'll conclude my presentation. If there's any questions, I can answer them now.
Commissioners, do you have any questions of Mr. Robb? I'd like to thank you for always having very clear presentations and material so that we're able to work through this knowingly and just very quickly.
Sure, thank you.
All right. Well, at this juncture, I'd like to open the public hearing. Clerk Moss?
Thank you, Chair Harrington. I did not see anyone sign up. Is anyone in the room wish to provide public comment for up to two minutes on this public hearing, as you've heard staff present? Not seen anyone in the room. Would any members online like to provide public comment for up to two minutes on this public hearing from Land Use and Transportation? Give you just a moment to utilize the raise hand function? Not seen any hands. Chair Harrington.
All right. With that, we'll close tonight's public hearing on this matter. Do we have a motion to adopt the resolution and order approving the service district annexation for these six tax lots and right-of-way totaling approximately three acres to the Tuallaton Hills Park and Recreation District? So moved? Second. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please vote by raising your hand. All those in favor, please vote by raising your hand or saying aye. Thank you, Commissioners. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously five to zero. Thank you, Teresa and Brian. Next, we'll move on to our third public hearing for this evening. This one comes to us from Finance and tonight we have Mr. Greg Munn, our Treasurer and Chief Financial Officer. Mr. Munn.
Good evening, Chair Harrington and Board of Commissioners. The item before you tonight is requesting approval of a resolution in order to adopt the fiscal year 2023-24 fee schedule. So as you know, it was only a week ago that the countywide fee schedule was adopted and due to an administrative oversight and important juvenile consolation, fee was erroneously admitted. And so this fee is necessary as the state provides funding that is inadequate to cover the cost of state mandated services. The county will provide all state required services, including mediation, rentation, mediation, and parent education for a $200 fee to participants. The detailed history of the current budget shortfall and plan to ensure continuity of service delivery have previously been provided to the Board in the correspondence authored by Lynn Schroder, Erin Calvert, and Cynthia Carr and presented to the Board by Ms. Calvert and that communication is in your packet. This fee has been added to the fee schedule as the seventh item from the bottom of page 19 of the fee schedule in your packet. This is the only change to the fee schedule that was adopted by the Board last week. That concludes my staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Munn. Commissioners, do you have any questions? It was quite a long fee schedule, so just one oversight is pretty darn good. So at this time, I'd like to open the public hearing. Clerk Moss.
Thank you, Chair Harrington. I did not see anyone sign up. Would anyone in the auditorium like to provide public comment on this fee schedule for up to two minutes? Give you just a moment. Raise your hand or come forward. Not seeing any in the room. Would any members of the public online wish to provide comment on this fee schedule? If you've heard the report from Mr. Munn, I'll give you just a moment to utilize raise hand function. Not seeing any hands. Chair Harrington.
With that, we'll close this public hearing. At this juncture, I would like to ask the Commission for a motion to approve the resolution and order to adopt the fiscal year 23-24 Washington County fee schedule. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please vote by raising your hand or saying aye. Thank you, Commissioners. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously five to zero. Thank you. And thank you, Mr. Munn, to you and the remainder of the budget team for doing all of the remaining work to get our new fiscal year budget all submitted and wrapped up as well as all the other fiscal year closeout. Next, we're moving on to our action items and we have seven of them. The first one is with regard to the Washington County Emergency Management System, 911, and a new franchise agreement with American Medical Response Northwest, Inc. And we have a few very smart subject matter experts to present this matter to us tonight. Welcome.
Thank you so much, Chair Harrington. Well, good evening, Chair Harrington, Board of County Commissioners. My name is Marissa Mantle. I use she/her pronouns. I'm the Director of Health and Human Services. As the Chair mentioned, we are here before you tonight with an action item. I will go ahead and turn things right over to Adrian Donner, Program Supervisor with Public Health, and Tim Case, Senior Program Coordinator with Public Health. Adrian.
Good evening, Chair and Commissioners. I will kick right in. Today, we're going to give you a quick overview of the negotiated process that we went through with American Medical Response Northwest, AMR, our next steps and some highlighted updates throughout the process so you understand some of the newer things that came from the negotiated process and then finally look to you for an approval to move forward. We tabled to represent the EMS system changes that we've made over the last two years or so in really leaning forward toward a new, modernized EMS system and response within Washington County. Both sides really came to the table very positive. We had extremely positive negotiation. It was a negotiation, so we'll talk about a few things that came out of that. Our next steps really are today's action item and then hopefully, depending on today's action item, a transition August 1st to AMR serving the community and members who are visiting our county as well. The franchise agreement is a five-year agreement with the option to extend three additional years twice, so for a total maximum of 11 years, at which point it's a mandatory out-to-RFP or competitive review process. Part of the negotiation process was, includes our ability to go to AMR to request records as needed. One of those automatic requests will be their audited financials each year. They sit on a calendar fiscal year, so in the spring, we'll request those. They've also confirmed that those will come to us automatically as well as they serve us moving forward. We have the ability to ask for other operational or other documents as well through the process. I'm going to pass it to Tim to talk about some of the more operation-focused items.
Good evening, Chair Harrington, Commissioners. As Adrian mentioned, through a few years' process, we sought to redesign our system to provide, you know, next-level care to the community and visitors of Washington County. Part of that is the tiering of delivery services. So that's adding an ALS or Advanced Life Support and a Basic Life Support level of care. This contract really, or I'm sorry, this franchise agreement really brings that to fruition. The ALS ambulances are staffed with one paramedic and one emergency medical technician and the Basic Life Support ambulances are at minimum staffed with two emergency medical technicians. Having this layer of delivery allows the resource to be reserved for the most appropriate care to the most appropriate patient. So the higher acuity, patients receiving advanced-level services as in strokes and heart attacks and that brings the BLS to the lower acuity calls, again, reserving those critical patients for the ALS level. With that being said, each level has the ability to either upgrade or downgrade a patient's response level based on things that they're finding through assessment. Additionally, ambulances will be dispatched through a single point through WACA and that brings a level of transparency that the system hasn't had for a long time in that dispatch can see actively the location of all ambulances within the system. Other fine points of this franchise agreement is the ability for our fire colleagues to enter into subcontracts with our franchisee. These agreements build a layer of resiliency in our system and depending on the terms of those agreements could allow for things such as surge protection during times of overtly high call volume, things that have not been predicted by historical demand, or even allowing a fire-first response paramedic to commit to a BLS ambulance to create an ALS level of care for a patient whose condition may have deteriorated between dispatch and arrival on scene. Additionally, the employment environment is a priority for the county in that the EMS clinicians are being taken care of. A few things that we paid particular attention to was the recruitment of a diverse workforce. Patients have noted that they feel comforted by seeing themselves reflected or represented in their caregivers. Additionally, they're establishing programs to provide scholarships to their employees to attend paramedic school and further their education, which helps to build and solidify our workforce here in the county. Also, diversity, equity, and inclusion training was a key component of this franchise agreement as that also can translate to more equitable care across the community.
I'm going to touch on a few negotiated provisions that took place during our negotiations. One is our hospital wait-time solutions. So nationwide, there are troubles getting ambulances into hospitals in the emergency department and out in a timely manner. So we really looked at this in a couple of different ways to come to a negotiated solution. The first being that county or our team will work with the hospital emergency departments and AMR to bring a task force together to really look at the overarching picture and look for solutions. AMR will work directly with the hospital emergency departments to look for new creative solutions that they can do as well. And then finally, if they experience significantly longer than normal turnaround times at the hospitals, they can request exemptions for long response times that occur as a result of those delays. We also negotiated an additional fee. So in the spring, we worked to increase our ALS or BLS fees within the county, starting on the 1st of July and that includes a loaded mileage fee as well, so if there's a patient in the car. We negotiated additional fee where AMR can charge fees that are allowable under government programs like Medicaid, but only if there's no out-of-pocket cost to the patients, which was really important to us that we didn't see any other increases in cost to the people in Washington County who may need ambulance services. The last two are the regular and ordinary rate increase. This is set in a mathematical model, so there's no gray area. It's based on the Consumer Price Index and Medicare annual inflation as well as AMR's ability to collect from government payers. It follows a mathematical order. As long as there's no additional increase requested, that will automatically take place July 1 of each year. If they want to request an additional increase for extraordinary circumstances, that request would come to you in a regular item. And then finally, with the clinical performance measures, which you've heard about over the years as being the great new thing we're bringing in with this franchise agreement, everyone's very excited about it. AMR is excited about the new opportunity. The medical directors on all sides are very excited about working on it, but we are in a new territory. So we put those specifics in our Appendix D so that throughout the year or the years, we could look at them and update as needed to make sure that we're looking at the right data and really getting the outcomes that we're hoping to get. And finally, we took a number of provisions from the AMR proposal that really added to the franchise agreement. Part of that is their commitment to doing community education and outreach and safety programs. These include things like compression-only CPR, regular CPR, things to the community that really strengthens, especially our bystander responses, which benefits everybody. And then adding more cultural competency through a health equity assessment and then an ensuing work plan once the assessment is done. And finally, a number of equity commitments and outcomes, some of which you heard Tim talk about as well. And finally, I come to my question for you. Does the Washington County Board of County Commissioners authorize us to enter into a 911 emergency transport franchise agreement with American Medical Response Northwest?
Thank you for the staff presentation. This is not the first opportunity that we've had to hear about the process and the negotiation, but nonetheless, I'm still going to ask Commissioners if you have any questions at this juncture. Commissioner Willie, go ahead.
Well, first of all, I do want to say thank you. This has been a long process. Couple of years into this, you've worked very hard on this and you've certainly heard me make comments on multiple of times, so thank you for responding to my inquiries. In your opening comments a few minutes ago, you referred to audited financial statements. I did not see, now realizing this is what, a 76-page document? I did not read every line, but I did not see in there where we were requesting audited financial statements nor who we were asking them for. In other word, what organization? Because AMR is a subsidiary. So could you clarify that for me and just give me some information?
Yeah, you're correct. There's not a specific finance section in this franchise agreement. We put in a clause that allows us to ask for various documents. One of them that we will ask for is the financials. The audited financials that will automatically come are from GMR, the parent company, which covers all of the AMR Northwest organization.
And I appreciate that very much because that's what my conversation with Brad earlier today was. And again, looking in the document on line 383, it refers to that, talks about the right to audit records, facilities, vehicles, processes, but it doesn't really, it only says financial documents. And to me, financial documents are not the same as financial statements nor audited financial statements and it doesn't really refer to GMR. This is a contract with AMR, not with GMR. So I don't think we're connected there. If we got into a little bit of a contest about what rights we have, I would much prefer it seen specifically included in this document and I think it'd be relatively easy to do that, but I would have to ask for the consideration from the Chair to make a recommended minor change in that paragraph on line 383.
First, I think before you do that, could we ask staff, both our team at the table as well as our county council for thoughts on this?
Absolutely.
Sure. Thank you, Chair Harrington, Commissioner Willie, and the rest of the Board. I became aware of this issue just recently and I've had an opportunity to talk to AMR's attorney about this. I forwarded to you a letter that they've sent on kind of their financial backing and how their parent company will fully back the subsidiary in this instance, AMR Northwest. And also, they provided the audited report for 2022, which I can share with you. But that's for the parent. So in my conversations with their attorney, they also said they are willing to share their unaudited financial statement for the subsidiary. It's not in the language right now. I think they'd be willing to change it, but it would be my recommendation that you approve this contract right now and then we can work with staff and get it amended because I don't see they're going to have any problems with it.
Yeah, I want to be as efficient as we can because obviously, like I said, you've been working on this a long time and I think everybody gets the general gist. It's just I started thinking about, we've been dealing for umpteen years with Metro West, a locally-owned, privately-owned organization that we could, we knew if there was going to be financial issues on it. We monitored their performance. That was kind of indicative of some of that. But this is a much larger organization and so I just wanted to make sure that we weren't still focused on AMR Northwest as being our only focal point because, well, right now, we've asked AMR to order new ambulances, hire people, educate, staff up technology and they have yet to bill $1. And so they've got to have some money behind them because that's no small amount that we've asked them to do and they've done that. So I just want to make sure that we, when we ask for financial information, that we have the ability to get the big picture and we don't have any financial issues coming down the pike. I mean, nobody saw the pandemic coming. So I don't know. God forbid we have any more of those things, but still, I want to make sure that we've got our ducks in a row. So Brad, if we can certainly accomplish that in subsequent conversations or communications or something, I'm more than willing to go ahead with this document today.
Absolutely. We'll work with their team at AMR to get an amendment here shortly thereafter.
Okay. Thank you very much. I appreciate your work and I apologize it was, I didn't give you much timeline on that, so thank you for that.
Follow-up to that, if I might. I think that's a reasonable request. We do that with the haulers. We do that with all of our franchise agreements. But I want to make certain that I understand, Jerry. Would it be not only the AMR parent audited financial statements, which I agree, you've got two CPAs talking to each other here, but also the subsidiary, which would be the direct party that we're dealing with? I don't think they'd be audited necessarily, but there are some statements. Are you suggesting both or one or the other?
Well, I don't know. You know, You know, generally, you can get financial statements of the parent company, and the parent company has the subsidies, subsidiaries included in that as additional information. I'm not, I guess, I don't know maybe what I'm asking. I guess if they said they were providing audited financial statements, if they're going to give us audited financial statements of AMR Northwest, a subsidiary of GMR, I'm okay with that.
The audited statements that will automatically come are from GMR.
Okay. Right. And they'll be able to show us the financial operations of AMR?
They're the full family, so the, the whole national company.
Okay.
But remember, under consolidated financial statements, they're consolidated. You won't see the local group at all. So this local group could be making lots of money, the parents could be losing it, and we're looking at rates based upon that blend. So do you want to see both, or are you happy with just the parents?
Well, I think let's work with Brad on,
Okay.
on what that definition looks like. Okay? All right. So I'm, I'm good with this. And again, thank you, Brad. Thank you, staff, everybody, for doing this.
Thank you, Commissioner Willie and Commissioner Rogers. Are there any other board questions at this point?
Not me.
All right. Seeing none, then, I would ask for a motion to authorize the Washington County to enter into Washington County EMS 911 Emergency Transportation Franchise Agreement with American Medical Response Northwest Incorporated. We have a motion. Do we have a second? We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please vote by raising your hand or saying aye. Thank you, commissioners. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously five to zero. Next, we'll move on to one of two items with regard to solid waste and recycling. The first is to consider a resolution and order approving the 2023 Solid Waste and Recycling Collection Rate Adjustments. Welcome.
Thank you so much, Chair Harrington. Well, good evening again. Mira Semantel with Health and Human Services. I will go ahead and turn things over right away to Tom Eggleston, our Solid Waste and Recycling Manager, for tonight's action item presentation.
Thank you, Mira. Good evening, Chair Harrington, Board of Commissioners. Tom Eggleston, Solid Waste and Recycling Manager, happy to be with you here this evening. We're here to talk about two items, as you mentioned. First, solid waste collection rates. And second, we'll go into administrative rules. They're very linked together, so the first item will be a little bit more robust, and then we'll breeze through the second one at your leisure. So getting started on solid waste and recycling collection rate review, there it is. A quick overview of the presentation before you this evening. We'll talk, we'll touch on the rate review process, the rate review findings, discuss an urban unincorporated residential food waste collection program proposal, some stakeholder engagement, and staff's recommendation for your board's action this evening. A quick overview of the rate review process for the benefit of the audience and the public. Every year, the Washington County conducts an annual rate review for garbage and recycling collection rates under the authority of Chapter 8.04 in our Solid Waste Control Code. That process starts on March 15th of each year with the submittal of detailed cost reports from all of our eight franchisees. Those reports are initially reviewed for consistency and accuracy. Three of our top service providers that represent 75% of the revenue of the system are separated out for an in-depth onsite visit to ensure that data reported agrees with data had onsite. At that point, the reports are consolidated and adjusted. If there's any anomalies or necessary needs to do that, the system return on revenue is determined. And then any adjustments necessary to meet the target, which is currently 10%, are determined. That goes to the Garbage and Recycling Advisory Committee, which met on May 18th of this year and made a recommendation to your board. Your board reviewed the recommended find, recommendation and the GRAC recommendation at your June 13th board work session, and we're here this evening for action. After rates are adopted, customers are notified on July 1st, a quick turnaround, and rates would take effect on August 1st. The findings for this year's annual rate review are shown on the slide above. You'll see that the return on revenue achieved by the solid waste collection system was at 6.35%. The target of 10% was not met, so we're below 10%. When we look at line of service, we can see that each line of service performed a little bit differently, and in aggregate, they make that 6.35%. And the, the calculation here is revenue minus expenses gives us the income or the profits of the operation, and then the profit or income divided by the revenue gives us the return on revenue, and this is a common methodology used in solid waste rate setting. Some of the reasons that we saw the performance go down versus last year, or the return on revenue decrease over last year, we did see an overall increase in revenue across the system of 4.7%. That was a result of customer growth in the residential base, and we did see a return of commercial sector activity that is picking back up from the post-pandemic times. This is 2022 financial data, so we're still kind of chasing some of that recovery. At the same time, we saw a 12.3% increase in direct costs of operations that was mostly related to disposal costs, a significant increase in recycling processing costs, which I think went up 50%, chasing the volatile recycling markets. And driver wages went up, and also maintenance and fuel costs went up. We also saw a 7.2% increase in direct, indirect operational costs, such as administrative salaries, corporate overhead, and training expenses. So the rate adjustments necessary to return the system to a 10% return on revenue are shown on the slide here. You'll see that the rate increases for residential are looking at about 3.6%, a 3.19% for commercial, and a 7.66% for Dropbox and compacters. And on the far right column is what that equates to for the average customer in our system in terms of a real cost. We also wanted, we're proposing a residential food waste collection program this evening. I'm trying to catch up on my notes page here. We do have an opportunity before us this year to add residential food waste collection to our unincorporated community members' garbage services. We are one of the last jurisdictions to be able to achieve this in the Washington County. We are also one of the largest residential customer-based jurisdictions with over 65,000 residential customers, so we do need to make sure we have enough processing capacity to manage the new yard debris and food waste mixed, if we so added. So some of the conditions that given us this opportunity, we did have a facility expansion at Recology North Plains. They added a new composting process and expanded their capacity by about 26,000 tons per year, and that'll help facilitate this program. We also have some adjustments in the Japanese beetle quarantine program that's in effect with the Oregon Department of Ag in the Cedar Mill neighborhood area, and that's going to allow this waste to not be directly landfilled and move into a composting process. We are also seeing additional transfer resiliency in the county. We were concerned about having all our eggs in one basket and having a disruption in our transfer system if all of the material was going directly to Recology Pride Recycling. And Mr. Legner's here this evening, recently opened up accepting of type 3 residential food waste, which is this material at their transfer station in Sherwood, and gives us another outlet if we have any disruption. So we have some resiliency there. And then lastly, customer demand remains high. One of the largest, excuse me, areas of feedback that our division gets from community members is they want to add food to their yard debris, because they did when they lived in Portland or in other jurisdictions, and it's a program that they see as highly valuable. This is a, we recommend this is a positive direction in terms of reducing our environmental impact of our garbage and recycling system. Food makes up 27% of our residential garbage, based on 2016 studies from DEQ. When, when food is landfilled, it decomposes and releases methane in those landfills, and then composting that material reduces those methane emissions and also creates nutrient-rich soil amendments. So what does that cost? Because everything costs some money. So we did an analysis with Marina and Company, worked with the Washington County Haulers Association to build a model, and we've determined that in order to add residential food scraps collection to the urban unincorporated residential customer base, we would need an additional 1.93% rate increase, which would take the increase for that customer base from 3.6 to 5.53. And that's about 48 cents additional per month for that customer base. Some stakeholder engagement. I mentioned the Garbage and Recycling Advisory Committee met on May 18th. That committee reviewed the proposal for both the rules and the rates, and provided a unanimous recommendation to your board that you approve the rate increases for the base rates, as well as the food waste collection program. We also provided notification to an interested parties list that we maintain in the Solid Waste and Recycling Division. We received no public comments on this topic specifically. And the Washington County Haulers Association did send your board a letter of support during our work session last two weeks ago. That leads us to our staff recommendation. We're recommending that your board adopt the resolution and order attached in your board packet, which effectively provides a six, 3.6% rate increase for rural residential, a 5.53% increase for urban unincorporated residential, to include food waste collection, a 3.16% increase for commercial service, and a six, a 7.66% increase for Dropbox compactor service. Thank you.
Commissioners, do you have any questions of our staff with regard to this proposal? Seeing none, I'd like to ask for a motion to adopt the resolution and order approving the 2023 Solid Waste and Recycling Collection Rate Adjustments.
Moved.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please vote by raising your hand or saying aye. Thank you, commissioners. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously five to zero. Onto a similar but different matter, a resolution and order amending the solid waste and recycling administrative rules. So moved? Oh, we're not, oh, I'm sorry. I'm early. I thought you already did.
No, you're good.
We did too, yeah.
Okay.
We sort of have.
She's ready. She's read her packet.
I'm an adopter.
We sort of have talked about it already, more than once.
Thank you. We have, as Tom mentioned, just a brief presentation as it ties in to the prior presentation and action item.
And it is important that the public know what this is about.
Correct.
So, excuse me.
Thank you again. Oh, well, there was an overview slide. Not there. Not necessary. We, I just wanted to give a quick overview of the administrative rule amendments. These are really, the rates are how we finance these program changes, and the administrative rules are how we operationalize those program changes. So in the RNO in front of you today are a few changes. Most importantly is the adjustment to the urban unincorporated residential service standards to include food waste collection that would be effective October 1st, 2023. The other items included in this minor rule adjustment package include a notice requirement that is added to ensure that community members are made aware of our new reduced rate program, should they be in arrears or in a collections or service termination status with their service provider. And finally, some minor quality improvement adjustments to the Recycle Plus program related to ensuring clarity about which sections of the rules apply to multifamily community members effective July 1st of this year, electronic on-call pickup request options, and also county approval of hauler-provided bags. This is based on feedback from the first year of the program rollout. Stakeholder engagement. Again, the advisory committee met on May 18th. They voted unanimously to recommend that your board make these, adopt these proposed changes to the administrative rules. Interested parties list notification went out as well. We had one public member comment. It was related to yard debris collection in rural Washington County, which was not considered in this rulemaking, and we have engaged in communications with that community member to talk about how that can be considered. And also, the Washington County Haulers Association has signaled support for these rule changes as well. And that leads to the end of my presentation.
Commissioners, do you have any questions on these administrative rules?
I don't have any questions on that. I just want to say, Thomas, thank you again. I think the only thing I'd change is that the first part of this presentation, it says solid waste and recycling manager, that would be you. I'd put highly esteemed and respected solid waste and recycling manager. You need to put some adjectives in there, Thomas.
I think our PIO would edit that out probably.
But thank you for your work on this.
Thank you.
Well, seeing no questions, do we have a motion to approve the resolution and order amending the solid waste and recycling administrative rules? Comments notwithstanding. So moved. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor of approving said resolution and order? Thank you, commissioners. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously five to zero. Good evening, Mr. Esteemed Solid Waste and Recycling Manager. Thank you for being here tonight.
I'm officially on the record on that, Thomas. I don't care what they say.
Next, we're going to move on to a ordinance with regard to regulation of public property with respect to camping, to camps and camping. And so even though tonight is a first read, what we're going to do tonight is go through our ordinance process of reading by title only, blah, blah, blah. But we're going to have a staff report so that everyone has the benefit of knowing tonight, but we'll do it again when we have the second read, what this is all about. So would you like to do the staff report, and then we do the whole title only?
Let's read in title only first, so I would turn it over to Brad Anderson.
Wait, first I have to ask for a motion to read the ordinance by title only. I have a motion. Do we have a second? We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please vote by raising your hand or saying aye. Thank you, commissioners. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously five to zero. Mr. Anderson.
So much for the interpreter.
Ordinance 896, an ordinance adopting Chapter 8.54 of the Washington County Code regulating public property with respect to camps and camping.
Thank you. Staff, please introduce yourself and go forth.
Thank you, Chair. Good evening, board. For the record, my name is Jess Larson, your Assistant Director with the Department of Housing Services.
Good evening. My name is Courtney Duke-Dreesen, Deputy County Counsel.
And we know the board is well aware of this work that's been underway for several months here in the county and with many of our jurisdictional partners, but because there is a lot of public interest in this important community work, we want to provide you with a brief staff overview for you with this reading tonight. And my role is to provide a brief context around our coordinated housing and homeless services, working to address unsheltered and, unsheltered and sheltered homelessness across the county, as it relates to this ordinance that's before you this evening. So just for some quick overview and context, of course, we provide a variety of services and programs to address homelessness, working ultimately to end homelessness with housing. But that work presents itself in serving people who are outside or unsheltered with programs like outreach workers, our coordination with our city partners, and other law enforcement agencies, drop-in centers, using our coordinated entry system. Also, in our shelter work, we have, of course, a variety of shelter programs, serving a variety of populations with a wide variety of models across the county. And then also, ultimately, those housing programs, providing those services first to prevent people from falling into homelessness in the first place with eviction prevention tools, to keep people housed, and then also the wraparound supports like case management and housing navigators to help people get housed and then stay housed. And there are a variety of programs that help all of this stay coordinated and effective in our community. And certainly, we don't do this work alone in Washington County. We do this with a network of service providers. There are more than, I think there are nearly 30 organizations, community-based organizations, many of whom are culturally specific organizations, many of whom provide specific population services in their local communities, and provide a variety of different shelter, housing, outreach, and more programming. So we deliver these services to our community in partnership with these experienced community service providers. And this is just a quick overview of some data of where we are at so far with this incredible scale up of services that is underway across Washington County. I'll draw your attention to the middle bar chart, which shows the extreme growth in shelter capacity from 2021 to 2023. We now have more than 400 beds open every night of the year, providing emergency shelter of many kinds. We've also added thou, over 1,000 permanent and short-term housing programs through our PSH programs, HCMS, rapid rehousing, there are many. So scaling up this capacity as well, so people can move through our shelters and into stable permanent housing. And then back to the far left bar chart, this scale up of resource and capacity is being demonstrated in our every-year point-in-time count, which you're very familiar with, and the demonstration of unsheltered homelessness is being reduced, has been reduced. From 2021, over 350 individuals were counted, to just this year, 230 individuals were counted. From 2021, over 350 individuals were counted, to just this year, 230 individuals were counted. So progress underway in Washington County with these new resources. And of course, all of that work is being achieved through significant new funding that's been approved by our region's voters, and also some additional funding so far from the governor's executive orders to help fund this myriad of dynamic and interconnected services, serving people from unsheltered homelessness to housing stability. And an exciting note to point to, the opportunity to make even further lasting community infrastructure investments, such as increasing permanent shelter capacity through capital funding opportunities, access center capital funding opportunities, acquisition of potential more PSH like the Hartwood Commons, and scaling up eviction prevention with these one-time funds that are made possible as we scale up the programming and underspend in the first couple of years. So to conclude this quick overview for you, now we'll draw your attention to the ordinance that Courtney is going to walk you through, and how it relates to our work in addressing homelessness, specifically for those community members who are currently unsheltered in our community.
Thank you, Jess. So again, as Jess mentioned, we know your board is well-versed, could probably give this part of the presentation yourselves at this point, but to level set and to inform the whole community listening. We wanted to talk a little bit about the legal background that has informed the development of the proposed ordinance before you. And that's a couple cases that came out of the U.S. District Court of Appeals for the Ninth Circuit, and a bill passed by the Oregon Legislature in 2021. So the first case of significance is called Martin v. Boise, which came out of the Court of Appeals for the Ninth Circuit in 2019, that held that the Eighth Amendment of the U.S. Constitution prohibits criminalizing unavoidable acts or consequences of being homeless, such as sleeping or sitting, lying outdoors, as cruel and unusual. Then in 2022, another case out of the Ninth Circuit called Johnson v. Grant's Pass, further clarified that Martin holding. First, well, it did a number of things, but for the purposes of the ordinance, there's two relevant things I want to discuss with you. The first being that the court clarified that sleeping in the context of Martin includes sleeping with rudimentary forms of protection against the elements. So it's cruel and unusual to regulate sleeping outdoors in a manner that doesn't allow for some form of protection. And that the criminalization prohibition in Martin also applies to civil citations when those civil penalties are closely intertwined with criminal punishments or penalties. Finally, in 2021, the Oregon Legislature passed House Bill 3115, and that law says that any city or county that regulates the acts of sitting, lying, or sleeping outside on public property that is open to the public must do so in objectively reasonable manner as to time, or objectively reasonable as to time, place, and manner with regards to the person experiencing homelessness. House Bill 3115 becomes operative July 1st of this year, just a few days. So, a little background on the development, our work in getting this proposed ordinance to your board. We first were before you on January 10th to talk about some best practices, what we were seeing in other jurisdictions, and to ask your board for some policy question feedbacks. At the end of that session, your board directed us to go ahead and prepare a draft ordinance, which we presented and walked through with you on April 4th. At the conclusion of that work session, your board directed us to go out and get feedback and engage with the community on the draft ordinance. We are here today on June 27th for this first reading and presentation, and we will be back before you on July 18th for a public hearing and second reading.
Along the way, we conducted important conversations with our community to receive feedback, and Courtney will next describe how that feedback was received and informed the development of the proposed ordinance. So we conducted three in-person community events, working to really focus on reaching out to community members in unincorporated Washington County, where this ordinance will apply, and also a virtual meeting. And of course, during that time, we also conducted an online survey, so for folks who were unable to attend any of those events, they were able to submit their responses there. So all of this community feedback was an important opportunity to inform the community about the role of this proposed ordinance, and the intentions of the state, and the legal precedents that Courtney described, and also gather information back on how the community will receive the anticipated impacts of this work.
All right. So now to walk you through, you know, the major critical substance of the proposed ordinance. So as we discussed with you on April 4th, the basic structure of the ordinance remains that when shelter is available, camps or camping on public property in unincorporated Washington County that is open to the public will be prohibited. However, when shelter is not available to an individual in a camp or camping, camping on public property in unincorporated Washington County will be subject to reasonable time, place, and manner restrictions. So, excuse me, as to time, when shelter is not available, Proposed Ordinance 896 will regulate camps or camping and limit a camp in one location for a period of five days. We arrived at this five-day period for a number of reasons. First, it's based on Washington County's experience that it takes three to five days to engage with our unhoused community members and connect them with services and outreach providers, and let them know about the other options that may be available to them. Also importantly and critically, the five-day timeline was developed in close partnership with and completely supported by Sheriff's Office partners as the proper balance of resources for enforcement of this time regulation. And then finally, your board has already adopted a policy, the Washington County Homeless Camp Removal Policy, consistent with state law, that requires 72 hours' notice to remove an established campment, so the five days is in line with previous board policy and state law. Next, as to place, when shelter is not available, Proposed Ordinance 896 will regulate the places camps or camping can occur for that five-day period. As discussed on April 4th, the ordinance maintains some areas where camping is prohibited and never allowed, even when shelter is not available, and those places are tax foreclosure properties within 500 feet of designated shelters, locations providing services to houseless individuals, 500 feet of schools, daycare facilities, and daycare providers. And we've also incorporated a prohibition on any property designated or operated by Clean Water Services or any agency of the state as a riparian corridor, floodplain, drainage area, water quality-sensitive area, vegetated corridor, sensitive habitat, or significant national resource area. New in the ordinance that's in your packet today is another place prohibition, and that would be within 500 feet of any camp that has been regulated under this ordinance, should it be adopted, under Washington County's Homeless Camp Removal Policy, or any other legal authority of the county. And this was, as Jess mentioned, in direct response to some feedback that we received from the community about, you know, when a camp would be regulated, how far would a camp or camper need to move? So we thought it was important to address that. So in this context, that does leave some permissive places when shelter is not available, that being the public right-of-way and most other public property that isn't in one of those never categories. So when shelter is not available, Proposed Ordinance 896 will regulate how camping can occur in the public right-of-way and on that other public property. This incorporates the manner type of regulations, and includes things that are familiar, again, to you, including only allowing essential materials in a camp or camping, limiting the size to a camp to no larger than 144 square feet, and prohibiting actions that may cause health or safety risks, such as waste accumulation, non-cooking use of fire, dumping water used for bathing or cooking on public property, digging or trenching, or in all criminal activity. As we discussed with you on the 4th, we also included some additional manner restrictions for the public right-of-way due to the special concerns there, not only to people who may be camping in the right-of-way, but also to the traveling public, pedestrians and bicyclers included. And those things include things like no obstruction of any portion of the travel area for either bikes, or bike lane, or bike path, or sidewalk, no obstruction of access either for emergency, non-emergency, or ADA use, prohibiting camping in areas where there would be no barrier between the camp materials and the area intended for vehicular use, and then finally prohibiting camping under Washington County bridges in via ducts and culverts. So, our next step, we are here in front of you today for this first reading and presentation. Again, we will be back in about a couple weeks, three weeks, for a second reading and public hearing, at which point your board may enact the ordinance, order it continued, amend the ordinance, or reject the ordinance. Should your board choose to adopt the ordinance or enact the ordinance, it will take effect in 30 days after your board's action. And that includes our staff presentation for this evening.
Commissioners, does anyone have any questions with regard to tonight's presentation? Go ahead, Commissioner Rogers.
In the city of Vancouver, I was watching a presentation of what they're doing, and instead of 500 feet, you're proposing there 1,000 feet. And I certainly don't have the expertise to know whether 500 or 1,000 is better, but they were pretty serious that that was an important number to them. Before we sit next, can you just give us a little information, not tonight, obviously, but maybe at our work session, why it would be 1,000 in their mind is more, I guess, agreeable to them or preferential to them? So, yeah, Jess, I mean, it's not tonight, it's just, you know, the next time. I'm just curious why.
Absolutely. Thank you, Commissioner.
Yeah, thank you.
Go ahead, Commissioner Willie.
Actually, that's exactly kind of what I was going to ask, because I do know that our own regulations for a permanent shelter is 1,000 feet from a school. So why would this be different than that? And I guess my other question is, knowing that the city of Hillsborough is going to put in a permanent location down by Wencoe, is there any of those kinds of businesses within that 500 or 1,000 feet in there? I mean, have we checked that out? Because they're certainly moving ahead on that permanent location, and it's going to be very important, so.
I'm not, I'm unclear what businesses you're asking us to look into, but is your question, have we looked at what property may be permissively available if that shelter location goes in? Or...
Let's see, we'll look at page 3, item 3D, and it says 500 feet of the following.
Right.
A school as defined by, a daycare facility as defined by, a family daycare provider as defined by. And so that entire section kind of defines the 500-feet description, I guess. And so, I just, first of all, I thought, I'm kind of with Roy on this. I thought 1,000 feet would be more appropriate, just because it's consistent with the other guidelines, but was just interested on how you came up with 500. And again, looking at the city of Hillsborough with their anticipated construction of a permanent shelter, want to make sure we don't violate something there.
Thank you for the clarification. I think staff can look, I don't know enough about Hillsborough's project, but we could certainly look into your question and bring back that information.
Okay, thank you.
Sounds like you better come to a work session soon before the July 18th meeting.
Any other questions, commissioners?
Yeah, I have a question and a comment. My question is, along those lines, the other question we got is, in the definition of daycare, family daycare, where would senior centers fit in in all these definitions, is the other question that we've received along those other questions.
Thank you for the question, Commissioner Fai. As Commissioner Willie was reading, these sections come from our community development code, which I am not an expert in, so I can definitely look further into see if we have a definition of senior, or if it falls in one of these definitions already.
More appropriate question related to that may be, do we have any senior centers in unincorporated areas of Washington County? And I don't believe we do. There may be senior care homes, which are very different than senior centers.
Yeah, I think that the constituent question was actually, pardon my terminology, senior care, senior care centers, how senior care was...
And I can definitely, we can definitely come back to you with that information. I don't, I'm not totally sure of the definitions sitting here tonight.
Yeah, and no worries. And my comment is, I just want to commend and thank you for all the work that you've all been putting this together. And as you know, District 1 has had so many active encampments over the length of this program. In particular, the camps at 197th and Baseline, and 185th and Shaw Street. I've spent a lot of time over the last few years talking with residents and staff about the encampment program, Martin v. Boise, and time, place, and manner. These conversations have been focused on finding ways to support both our housed and unhoused communities. I want to ensure that we are working to address the underlying causes of homelessness and not criminalizing and/or exaggerating the challenges that are experienced by folks who are unhoused. A camping ordinance is part of that solution to address the issues that we are experiencing related encampments, as it will provide a framework for managing the presence of camps in public spaces. I believe that this ordinance, along with the launch of our tiny pod villages or safe rest villages, will balance the needs of those experiencing homelessness with the... And I have heard so many who've experienced, both from our unhoused community and housed communities, and some of the concerns I've heard were public safety, sanitation, the issue of public spaces by all residents. You know, I think I won't belabor this issue, but many of us have said, and it's the best practice, and it's the solution to homelessness is housing. And I want to commend the staff for using all the tools in the toolbox and putting together this ordinance, and look forward to how you come up with the questions that was posed today. So thank you.
Are there any other board questions or comments at this juncture? All right. Seeing none, we've already gone through our first reading, and we thank you very much for being here tonight to provide more clarity to everyone in our community on what this ordinance is.
So, Madam Chair, it would be helpful, in following our charter, to have a motion for a second reading and public hearing at the time certain suggested in the agenda.
So I would ask for a motion to continue this matter to July 18th, 2023, for the second reading and first public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Thank you, commissioners. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously five to zero. Next, we'll move on to the fifth of seven action items for tonight, and I'd like to invite Ms. Latricia Tillman and Liz Morris up to our presentation table to speak tonight about a resolution and order to adopt Policy 211, Access for People with Disabilities. Please take it away.
Thank you so much. Good evening, Chair Harrington, and Board of Commissioners. My name is Latricia Tillman. I'm your Chief Equity and Inclusion Officer, and I'm already noticing an error on the title slide. This is an overview of the Draft ADA Policy and Procedures for Board Action. We did present the Draft Policy and Procedures for Board Review, so today we will give you a very brief overview of the Americans with Disabilities Act, and present the policy proposed for board adoption. So as was noted in the work session earlier this year, the ADA was passed and signed So, as was noted in the work session earlier this year, the ADA was passed and signed into law by President George Herbert Walker Bush on July 26, 1990, and it recognizes that it's not enough to remove policy barriers, but imperative to mandate affirmative conduct to remove architectural and communication barriers and provide accommodations for people with disabilities. The Americans with Disabilities Act requires all public entities, regardless of whether they receive federal funding, to be subject to Title II of the Americans with Disabilities Act, which prohibits discrimination based on disability. The purpose of the Americans with Disabilities Act is to provide a clear and comprehensive national mandate for the elimination of discrimination against individuals with disabilities, and to provide clear, strong, and consistent enforceable standards addressing discrimination against individuals with disabilities. So, because we are a public entity with 50 or more and more employees, we are required to have at least one responsible employee to coordinate the Americans with Disabilities Act compliance. We can have more, but we are required to have at least one, and to adopt and publish procedures for resolving grievances under Title II of the ADA. And with that, I'll turn it over to Liz to go through the proposed policy.
Good evening. For the record, I'm Liz Morris. Nice to see you all again. So, for the proposed policy, development of the Washington County's proposed policy included consultation with program specifics to ADA, as well as it relates to housing and human services, facilities, ITS, and all the other partners. Community stakeholder groups, service providers, and disability rights advocates were also consulted. The Equity Leadership Council and several of its subcommittees were consulted. The policy and procedures were open for all staff to review as well. This draft policy is related procedures presented in the attachments reflect and incorporate all of the feedback as much as it was practical. So, the three points on the slide are, reflect the primary pillars of ADA. Washington County has the commitment for equal access to its programs, services, and activities for peoples with disabilities. Washington County recognizes its obligation under the ADA to proactively modify its policies and procedures when necessary to ensure that people with disabilities are afforded an equal opportunity to participate. It is the policy of Washington County to comply with all the applicable laws concerning the notifications and participations of peoples with disabilities. So, requests for accommodations will be coming in and reviewed on a case-by-case basis with attention to Washington County's commitment to equity, diversity, and inclusion, and removing barriers to participants. The feasible, sorry, the feasibility of the proposed accommodations and its impact on ensuring the essential function of the service provided. So, requests come and verifications from medical providers, it's utilized to ensure that there's a nexus between the disability and the request for an accommodation. So, whether it be in an active engagement, engaging with applicants, and an interpretive to ensure that there is an understanding. So, it's going to be a conversation, making sure that there's a connection between what is the ask and understanding what the appropriate departments and agencies can approve when appropriate. So, in housing, that's when I'm coming as one of your representatives here, we track and respond and refer as needed for any requests that come into the department. The tracking method will help us to do analytics to check unconscious bias by reviewing the types of requests and outcomes, compare them and demographics in order not to have a desperate impact on those that we serve. By tracking and routing these requests to appropriate places, it will help us ensure that the following, the follow-up is happening when needed. Similarly, we're proposing that the county and the policies, the county will also have a tracking method to ensure that as requests come in, it gets reviewed and routed to the appropriate departments. And we will respond to all requests possibly engaging in that interactive process, and specific program accommodations are going to happen at the program level, whether it's our, if it's county-wide, it will happen with the office reviewer to make sure that we are in compliance. All right. So, the costs, the procedures, this, sorry, I'm going to start over for a second. The procedure clarifies that the cost of accommodations will be the responsibility of ours or the contractor, it's not the participants or the people who are asking for it. So, nor charge will be to the applicant or participant. We do want to make sure that this is reasonable. Individual clients and the community members may grieve any alleged ADA violations as provided in the Washington County ADA grievance procedure, which is to be determined. And Washington County designees, designates the Chief Equity and Inclusion Officer or designate as the Washington County ADA coordinator. So, this policy provides us the mechanism for grievance, as well as that centralized coordination role.
Okay. And with that, we can take any questions that you have, but we'll turn it over to the board.
I know we've had a work session on this, but if my colleagues don't mind, I'd like to start with the questions. So, we have the action before us, the resolution in order to adopt policy 211, access for people with disabilities, but the packet also includes the two sets of administrative procedures. So, could you just touch on, are we also adopting the administrative procedures tonight? Or how is it helpful to have both the policy and the procedures in the pack? Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Harrington, for that question. The reason why we include the procedures in the packet is because this is a brand-new policy with brand-new procedures. But what we're asking is the board to adopt the policy, and the procedures will be implemented through the county administrative office.
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure that was clear. I appreciate it. Go right ahead, Ms.
If I may add, what is helpful also in the procedures, as we are a learning organization, through the implementation to ensure that we are upholding the spirit of the policy, procedures need to be updated from time to time in accordance, and so that allows that management flexibility in our learning organization.
And I'll just say, it helped me to see the procedures to better understand how the policy gets implemented. So, thank you. Thank you. Other commissioners, questions? Go ahead, Commissioner Willie, or comments?
I feel like a dog on a bone, Latricia. I'm sorry, but there's still two places in there where we need to refer to them as business days, not just days.
Yes.
So, I do apologize for this to be this...
It's in the procedures, though, right? Versus the policy?
It is in the procedures, yes. So, if we just make sure, and when we do, there are those procedures that we, and let me identify where they are, because it's easy, under 211A, it's number seven, paragraph number seven, and under 211B, it is on number three.
Commissioner Willie, the county administrator is very comfortable with that change, and will make that change in the procedures.
Can I just note that I did have a conversation with Tom Carr, County Counsel, and we talked, his preference was to use business days, but we can resolve whatever makes the most sense.
No, we're just being consistent, it just says days.
Okay.
Rather than business days. Okay? So, again, yeah, I realize that. I preferred calendar days, but that's okay with me, business days, as long as we're consistent through the documents.
Great. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from commissioners? Alrighty, then, I would like to ask for a motion to approve resolution, the resolution in order to adopt policy 211, access for people with disabilities.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second to adopt our ADA policy for the first time ever. All those in favor, please vote by raising your hand or saying aye. Thank you, commissioners. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously, five to zero. Right. Thank you for being here and for doing this work. All right, on to number six. We have another first, and that is adopting, approving, our first-ever capital improvement plan, also known as a CIP. So, whether he likes it or not, Mr. Greg Munn, our Treasurer and Finance Officer, gets to come up to the table again for the umpteenth time in the last couple of weeks, because tis the season to do all things budget and finance-related. But he also has two other subject matter experts, Mr. Sam Kim, the interim Chief Information Officer, and I have forgotten your title.
Greg Wyman, real property manager, sitting in for Laurel Brown for Facilities.
Thank you very much, Greg. I appreciate your saving me. So, oh, and Mr. Roberts, please join us.
He was waiting to not have a chair.
You can't be left off.
Stephen's got FOMO, I think. He's going to miss out on it.
So, our capital improvement plan includes all things facilities, all things information technology, and all things land use and transportation. So, it's a real team effort tonight, folks, so thank you all for being here. I know it's been a long day for you. We'll turn it over to you now.
Thank you, Chair Harrington, Board of Commissioners. My name is Greg Munn, for the record. We've already gone over that, and we've already met all of our esteemed table mates here as we come before you to discuss the initial 2023-2028 capital improvement plan. So, the purpose of tonight's agenda is to present and ask the board to approve that initial five-year plan. Yep. Long-term capital improvement planning is a best practice in local government. It is an investment management activity that provides a structure for the county to manage and maintain existing publicly funded assets while planning for capital investments to meet future public service needs. And here's just an overview of today, today's, tonight's agenda, and a lot of this is an overview of what we've talked about in the past, but we'll go over the capital improvement plan, what it is and why it's important. We'll review the CIP timeline process, and particularly the component of the process that we've been able to achieve so far, and where that puts us in moving forward with arriving at a full CIP development process. Clarify any remaining questions or concerns from the board, and request the board to approve the 2023-2028 capital improvement plan.
And I will take this slide as a reminder for the board, and also for information for members of our community. This is our Washington County management framework. This is what we are moving towards in our management structure here at Washington County. We don't have time this evening to go through a slide that probably takes a good half an hour to walk through, so I will try to do my best in brevity. The dark blue areas on this slide are areas that we have in place in Washington County. As you can see, our equity resolution is at the top of the slide, and that feeds into all of our work. We also have our operating budget, which your board just approved just recently, and we have our accounting and reporting functions in place. There are several factions of this slide that we are moving to, such as the community strategic plan, which will be in the center of this, in this slide. The board is having upcoming roundtables to talk about long-term vision, outcomes, and initial plan, strategic plans, set strategic goals that we can work towards. We're developing, revising financial policies, and once again, I won't go through all these slides, but I do want to highlight the area that is in red. This, tonight, is our capital improvement plan, management focus. This includes, and if you see above, the capital improvement plan, four key areas, land use, community plans that have been in place, transportation system plan that is also in place, facility parks needs, we are currently undergoing a facility condition index that will help inform what our future needs are, and then IT service roadmap. So, we've made great progress, and as you can see by the slide, there's more progress that we are committed to making as a, as a one Washington County. And I do want to just take a moment just to commend the approach of this work, as you can see by this table, it truly is a one Washington County approach to this initial plan tonight, that will be a first foundational step, that will be informed by the continued work we're doing this calendar year and also into the future calendar years. And with that, I will turn it back to Mr. Munn.
Thank you. All right, the next slide, this is just a quick overview of where we've been in this planning, in this journey, on our, on our developing our CIP, going back to 20 and 21, where a lot of the initial planning for facilities and the whole concept of a countywide CIP began. Most recently, we've conducted two work sessions with the board. One was in December of '22, and the last one, March 15th of '23. And here we are today, presenting the proposed CIP and asking for your approval. All right, so, I want to take a minute, there's a lot on this graphic, but I'm just going to paint the big picture of it, because I think the concept is really what's important here. The, this is the timeline of developing a CIP. From on the left-hand side, the initial planning phase, the reason why that red box is around that is it identifies that's where we're at today. And I have the next slide after this, I'll talk a little bit more about that. But as you move to the right, the center section, the key, the components that we haven't worked through yet, but that we will as we move forward and mature our plan, is the prioritization process, the community input process, and the funding plans for the future, for the next round of the CIP. And then as you move further to the right, the CIP preparation and adoption, similar to what we're doing tonight. But the, the major piece there that we'll incorporate into future planning work is that part in the middle. And you can see there that there's board discussion and actions in blue in the middle there, starting in August, and community engagement as well in, in brown. So, if we take that initial planning box, pull that out and put it on here, I just want to dive a little bit deeper and explain what's in this CIP, this initial CIP, and what's not, to give you some context there. So, as you can see, there's some key components in an initial planning portion of the CIP, and what it does include is the inventory of our assets, projects currently underway and planned, and the funding assumptions for those current projects. It doesn't include our master plans, because we, we don't necessarily have those fully inventoried yet. It includes, and it doesn't include, an asset condition index, for example, the facility condition index that we've been talking about, but that will become part of that as we move forward. So, it's, it's a good first step, and it begins to help us with the stair stepping as we move forward to developing a full CIP in the next year to come. And so, this initial capital improvement plan is a first for Washington County, as we know, and is comprised of a countywide project inventories consolidated into one five-year view. The initial plan will continue to mature as we include additional project information, community involvement, and board policy and priority setting. So, next steps, today, we're here to ask for the board approval of the CIP, the initial plan, and in the future, beginning probably in the August timeframe, we'll, we'll take the next step into setting up our planning and work for the 24-29 CIP. So, with that, that concludes my presentation. I've brought all the experts here to possibly answer any questions you might have on some of the details. I'm going to turn it back over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Munn. Commissioners, any questions?
Yeah? We're getting tired up here. Been a very long day since 1:00. Thank you. This is beginning of process, I understand that. I mean, no numbers attached, and you've got a lot of work to do yet, and I'm not really clear. I understand your process, read it through. It's a very normal process, best practice, kind of a step forward in establishing, I think, what will be a very good plan, but how are you going to actually accomplish the work? I haven't heard that part. Are you going... Are you going to try to do a massive review of the entire county? Are you gonna take a department and go through and do more detailed analysis? I mean, when you talk about CIP, you're gonna have to have, obviously, a threshold of capitalization, I guess, of 5,000 or 10,000, whatever you select, that's normal. And then you're going to take lives, and you're gonna get down to the nitty-gritty. And I think we all are anxious to see a number, so we know what we've got as a nut to crack. But can you give me, without boring us this late night, can you tell us a little bit what, what your process is from here?
If I could. So tonight is the first time that we've seen this graphic on the Capital Improvement Plan. I would ask that this whole construct of the Capital Improvement Program timeline come back to us in a work session. Because tonight's action is only with regard to the initial plan. But what they wanted to do in the presentation was to ensure that we and our community have the opportunity to understand how this initial plan fits in the context of having a full CIP. So you're asking perfectly reasonable questions. I just think it would be more appropriate for us to come back to this in a work session.
What I like about that, I don't have to strain my mind too much at this 9:00 hour almost, but I think it's a good suggestion, because there's some very detailed and questions I guess accountants would ask one another, so.
And even if he had the answer for you tonight, I'm afraid I wouldn't remember it. So all the better.
Oh.
Thank you, Commissioner Rogers. I appreciate it. Do you have any questions with regard to tonight's action on the initial plan?
No, I think it's, it's very initial, as long as everybody understands that. I mean, it's very broad, but yeah, it's a good job. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Other commissioners?
I'll just say that I'm going to do something highly unusual for me tonight, and that is, I'm going to approve the plan without having read said plan document. Hasn't been available to us for very long, though we did have a work session on all the ingredients. I looked over all those spreadsheets and whatnot. But ordinarily, when I vote to approve a plan document, I've read said document. So I just thought I'd share with my colleagues. It's out of the norm tonight, just so you know, so.
Did you catch in there that you had to do the detailed analysis of each line? That's in part of there? No.
If so, I'm in trouble.
You're in trouble.
Anyway, but I do support this initial plan and all that you've gone over with us in the development of it. And I did gloss over the first portion of it, so I'm totally in the spirit of it. Okay, well, thank you for the presentation and our very limited questions tonight. And at this juncture, I would ask for a motion to approve this five-year initial capital improvement plan.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please vote by raising your hand or saying aye. Thank you, commissioners. Any opposed? It is unanimous. We have adopted our first-ever initial capital improvement plan. Yay!
And what a great road we're on. Thank you.
All right, we have one more action item for tonight, and that is another policy to adopt the Washington County Fair Treatment, Equal Protection, and Nondiscrimination Policy. And Ms. Latricia Tillman, you are back in the hot seat, presenting again. Thank you.
I am back, this time without a friend at the presentation table, but I'm...
You want me to come down there and say...
Yeah, come on. Good evening again, Chair Harrington and board. Again, Latricia Tillman, Chief Equity and Inclusion Officer. And again, I found another typo. It is not June 13th. That was the date of your work session on this policy. Today is June 27th. We are presenting it for board action. So I will do a brief overview, Title VI of the Civil Rights Act, which helps, is the foundation for the work that we're doing here to promote fair treatment, equal protection, and nondiscrimination, and then present the proposed policy for board adoption. All right. So this timeline, very hard to see on screen, reflects the need for a fair treatment and nondiscrimination policy. As you can see on the left side of the slide, it documents the generational trauma and racism and harm that was rooted in the United States' unique system of slavery and the segregation, both in law and in practice, that followed the ending of the system of slavery in the United States. But the right side, my right side of the slide, also reflects the accomplishment that Washington County and your board in particular has made since the adoption of the equity resolution in 2020. So we are moving forward to right the generational wrongs of the past. So quickly, Title VI basically states that no person in the United States shall, on the grounds of race, color, or national origin, be excluded from participation in, denied the benefits of, or be subjected to discrimination under any program or activity receiving federal financial assistance. And I will briefly talk about Title VI's requirements. Recipients of federal financial assistance, which Washington County as a whole is, may not directly or through contractual or other arrangements utilize criteria or methods of administration which have the effect of subjecting individuals to discrimination because of their race, color, or national origin, or have the effect of defeating or substantially impairing accomplishments of the objectives of the program with respect to individuals of a particular race, color, or national origin. So we can't use criteria or administrative methods that discriminate. We can't discriminate based on protected class. We can't implement policies and practices that may seem neutral on their face but have a disparate impact on protected groups. And we must ensure that people who are less proficient in English or prefer a language other than English have meaningful access to services and information, and ensure that our actions do not exclude individuals because of a protected class. All right. So Promising Practices, this is guidance that came from the federal government, and we tried to build these Promising Practices into both the policy and the procedure. So really, what we're looking for is the board's reaffirmation of a commitment to nondiscrimination protections, to broad communication to staff and contractors and service providers, a commitment to nondiscrimination. And we talked about what this means through messaging, training, and policies at the work session, to inform participants and beneficiaries of their nondiscrimination rights and protection, and to collect and analyze information about protected classes to identify barriers. Promising practices also include identifying a point of contact for the public to submit complaints of discrimination, engaging with and including diverse racial, ethnic, and limited English populations, and seeking their participation to inform the management of our programs, and to assure language access services and translated vital documents are readily available. And you all adopted, your board adopted, the limited English assistance policy in November of 2020. Okay, so here we're pivoting to the proposed policy. Policy would state it's Washington County's policy to prevent and remediate discrimination on the basis of an identity protected by federal, state, and local civil rights laws. We want all people to receive quality services and benefits and have opportunities for meaningful engagement in Washington County programs and activities. So this policy is intended to affirm Washington County's commitment to equal protection and fair treatment for all people who live, work, learn, play, and pray in Washington County, as well as to require taking affirmative action to address past and present discrimination. The policy of Washington County would be that no person shall, on the basis, on the grounds of race, color, national origin, English proficiency, age, disability, religion, marital status, familial status, sex, gender, gender identity, sexual orientation, or source of income, be excluded from participation in, denied the benefits of, or otherwise be subjected to discrimination under any program or activity that is a recipient of federal financial assistance. This is an expanded set of protected classes, because we are not only aligning with federal policy, we are aligning with state policy as well, which has significantly expanded protected classes. Washington County shall comply with all applicable federal and state, as I mentioned, agency regulations prohibiting discriminatory treatment in county programs or activities, and do so whether or not those programs and activities are federal-funded, consistent with the Civil Rights Restoration Act of 1988. So even though as an entity, we are considered a recipient of federal funding, even if certain programs are not recipients specifically of federal funding, they're still to comply because of the Civil Rights Restoration Act and because we're considering Washington County one entity. And Washington County will include Title VI language. We do, this will just be reflected in policy, in all written agreements, and will monitor their compliance. And then finally, the policy would establish Washington County's Office of Equity, Inclusion, and Community Engagement as the responsible office for initiating and monitoring Title VI activities, preparing required reports and updates, coordinating a complaint process, and other responsibilities as required. And as is noted in the app, in the full board materials, the policy includes a significant list of definitions, the applicability, and the responsibilities for implementation. Specifically, it applies to all Washington County programs, departments, contractors, service providers. Again, and it serves as the foundation by which we ensure civil rights compliance and build toward greater equity and inclusion for everyone in our community. I won't spend time on the procedures unless you have questions about them. We did talk about how the procedures include best practices for implementation, as well as investigatory standards, contractor compliance expectations, and in the case of complaints and appeal process. And so it's staff recommendation that the board adopt Policy 212 Fair Treatment, Equal Protection, and Nondiscrimination.
Commissioners, do you have any questions? Seeing none, I would like to ask for a motion to adopt Policy 212, the Washington County Fair Treatment, Equal Protection, and Nondiscrimination Policy. So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please vote by raising your hand or saying aye. Thank you, commissioners. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously, five to zero. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Another first accomplishment.
Latricia Tillman, is this your last board session with us? Oh my goodness, we'll dearly miss you, and thank you for all the work you've done for Washington County. We tremendously benefited having your leadership here. Thank you for your service.
And next, that brings us to our second public comment period for the evening. Clerk Moss.
So we did have a person sign up earlier, so we'll see if they're here. Brandy Brown? Nope. Okay, would any other members in our auditorium wish to provide comment on any county-related topic for up to five minutes? Not seeing any hands, or anyone come forward. We had two sign up online, so first we'll go with Russell Okamoto. Russell, can you hear us?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Please go ahead for up to five minutes.
Oh, great. Okay. Sorry, I'm trying to get my timer, or see your timer. Hello, board. My name is Russell Okamoto. I am testifying on behalf of the Oak Hills Historic Mitigation Committee. As you know well, recently from Warren versus Washington County, the purpose of statewide planning goal Fives is to protect not only natural resources but also historic areas and open spaces. Washington County is not complying with at least nine Goal V-driven state administrative rules, county development codes and policies, and urban growth functional plans for a specific area with the following designations. One, the area is a significant historic district. Two, it is an open space. And three, it is also a park. The specific area is the school playground at Oak Hills Elementary School. Oak Hills Elementary School is an eligible contributing resource to the Oak Hills Historic District listed on the National Register. Playgrounds in the Sunset West Community Plan are open space and playgrounds are parks. Beaverton School District plans to install a six-foot chain-link fence on the school playground property line abutting homes. Homeowners in Oak Hills oppose this planned fence, as, as it will at a minimum. One, block access to pedestrian walkways and front use of the open space. For over half a century, homeowners have enjoyed use of this open space for recreation and as a pedestrian circulation route. Original home buyers purchased their homes with backyards onto this open space with the seller assurances that such recreational amenities would be enjoyed for perpetuity. Two, trap homeowners abutting the school field into their backyard, preventing emergency egress to the open space in cases of fire or home intrusion. Three, create maintenance issues for homeowners, including major field water runoff. The planned fence will run down the center of field drainage dishes, ditches along some homeowner fences, limiting access to drainage ditches in the field via homeowner gates, which have been in use for decades. Four, vitiate the aesthetic cohesiveness of the master-planned Oak Hills Historic District. Five, reincarcerate two families of Japanese-American ancestry, caging them in their own backyards. Over 200 lots in Oak Hills have signed a petition in opposition to BSD's fence plan. Many homeowners in opposition to the fence have kids that are students at Oak Hills Elementary. I myself am a graduate of Oak Hills Elementary, class of 1978. Homeowners want safety for kid, for their kids, students. However, evidence shows that school fences do not make kids safer. When it comes to safety for students and staff, many proven alternatives to fencing exist. Last month, I apprised county of BSD's fencing plans. I cited regulations to be emailed or enumerated later, time permitting, and requested clarifications and remedies. On June 6th, county emailed back stating, "This is not an issue the county has a role in." I am testifying that county is shirking its role in this matter, and as a consequence of flouting Goal V-driven regulations, county is not protecting the Oak Hills Historic District by permitting BSD to, one, install fencing around Oak Hills Elementary School as an act of demolition that destroys in part the Oak Hills Historic District, resulting in the loss of architectural character and significance. Two, install a fence on the school yard that will not be set back by 30 feet, but instead will be directly on the property line between homeowners and the school, and thus abut existing homeowner properties. Three, alter, deface, demolish the Oak Hills Historic District without first obtaining a development permit. Four, turn open space into closed space by fencing it off permanently for much of the year. Five, diminish and destroy enjoyment of open space and make parks less accessible to neighborhood residents. Six, restrict access to the school playground as a park, which will create, by definition, park-deficient areas. County has failed to recognize ORS 358653 and apply OAR 6600230200, and duly apprised BSD of these state statutes and rules. Finally, county is willingly abetting in the creation of a public nuisance that is particularly hazardous for elderly homeowners, many who are over 80 years old. And two, complicit in committing moral injustice by allowing culturally insensitive land use. You will be implementing, quote, "policies and practices that seem neutral but have a disproportionate impact on protected groups." Unless there is meaningful intervention and mitigation in this matter by county by end of this week, I will be filing a notice for a petition for enforcement of Goal V-driven regulations defined by state, county, and metro, as per ORS 6604530, in accordance with ORS 197319. County is not compliant with the following: CFP Policy 11, OAR 66023208A, Community Plan General Design Elements IV and VI, Significant Resources Map of the Community Plan, CDC 43121.445-5, Urban Growth Functional Plan 3071201240C, and 3071210. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Yakamoto. We will leave this matter in the able hands of our county council and our county administrator. Thank you for sharing your information.
And next, ma'am chair, we have Addie Smith. Addie, can you hear us? Addie, can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Please go ahead for up to five minutes.
Hello, my name is Addie Smith. I've come to the conclusion, after looking at the board members, that the only way I can make change is to run for the office in 2024. There are no African-Americans on the board, and the current board is too comfortable with the status quo to care about the racism and discrimination running amok in the county to want to implement changes that impact the community as a whole. Black people, African-Americans, aren't safe in Washington County. There is a huge unrepresented Hispanic, Indian, and African-American population in the county. There are too many people on the board who don't represent all of the people of Washington County. There are too many people on the board whom are comfortable with racism and discrimination and violations of state and federal law by judges Kathleen Proctor, Boucher, Minchaca, Thompson, Bailey, and others in Washington County. I wouldn't want to be sworn in by a judge who breaks the law. I couldn't be friends with a judge who intentionally, knowingly, willingly, and with malice breaks state and federal laws that are supposed to be guaranteed to individuals accused of a crime. I wouldn't want to be sworn in by a judge who allows their colleagues and fellow judges to be released from jail on a $2,000 bond after being accused of watching child porn with babies as young as four years old. Meanwhile, black young men accused without proof of harassment and stalking are forced to sit in jail for a month or even years because these same judges refuse to abide by the law. I wouldn't want to be sworn in by friends, or I wouldn't want to be sworn in by or friends with a judge that is a bad apple. There's no accountability or responsibility for racism and discrimination. No one ever actually says to these judges, or even Sheriff Pat Garrett, or even county administrator Tanya Angie, that what they're doing or allowing under their watch is wrong, is illegal, is in violation of a person's civil rights, and shouldn't be acceptable or tolerated. Sheriff Pat Garrett and the chief deputy, Earl McCray, allow their staff and classifications to discriminate against individuals housed in the jail, and to provide inaccurate release information and inaccurate release conditions, and to conduct incomplete, unprofessional, prejudiced investigations. The Washington County Community Corrections Department must be closed and its staff terminated. The budget for the Washington County Community Corrections should be used towards more meaningful rehabilitation for all individuals housed there and not just the white individuals housed there. What is happening now is that black individuals are not providing counseling, access to the resource room, mental health care, or any kind of rehabilitation. Until this can be a facility where all individuals are treated fairly without racism, discrimination, and bias, this facility must be closed. Senator Manager Barrios and her staff supervisor Jim Brown, Counselor Meredith Pomeroy, Charlie Wallace, Molly Rogers, and Matt Burgess have violated the civil rights of black individuals housed at the CCC. They are racist, period. Black individuals are not provided access to go to work, to be released on ankle monitor, to keep living their lives, keep their homes, pay their bills, and take care of their families. I'm going to provide an example of racism and discrimination in Florida, Georgia, and Texas. They have voted to remove diversity, equity, inclusion in their schools. They voted to remove education on African-American history, including enslavement, which is American history. Here's how Oregon is more racist than these states. Oregon teachers aren't educating students on African-American history at all. Students are learning about the Holocaust, but students, including my daughter, aren't learning about enslavement or slavery, or what white people did to black people, and how systemic and structural racism of today are extensions of slavery. The difference is that when racism and discrimination happens in the South, the media circulates it 24/7. When it happens in Oregon, the media, including Associated Press journalist Andrew Selzke, who lives in Oregon, won't even post it on his social media. Doesn't mean it's not happening. It means the media doesn't want the nation to know how deeply disgusting and vile the racism and discrimination and xenophobia really is in these Democrat-led states. Oregon, Washington State, California, and New York are far more racist than any southern state or GOP-led state that stay in rotation on their news cycles. Finally, because my son's rights under state and federal law in Washington County Circuit Court were so egregiously violated, I will start a program for men, and especially black men, who've been accused of some sort of domestic violence, but are innocent, can prove their innocence, but never got the opportunity and a court of law, and have had their rights violated in a court of law. This program will raise awareness that not all women are victims of domestic violence, and not all women are telling the truth. This program will provide rental assistance, housing, job opportunities, and more to men who want to reveal their lies after such disgusting devastation. This program will seek to convict women who lie about being victims of domestic violence. I should not have to sweet-talk elected officials into following the law or not violating state and federal law.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Madam Chair, that concludes the list of sign-ups for tonight.
All right, thank you, Clerk Moss. That brings us to board announcements. We will not be having a set of board meetings next Tuesday, July 4th, which is Independence Day. It's a holiday. Our offices will be closed. The following Tuesday, July 11th, we'll have a work session day starting at 9:00 a.m. That Thursday, the 13th, we'll have a roundtable starting at 9:00, and that meeting will take place only in the morning. On Friday, July 14th, we have a special meeting of the Washington County Board of Commissioners, the Columbia County Board of Commissioners, and the Clackamas County Board of Commissioners, as we are a Council of Forest Trust Land Counties District, and we have a special meeting with the Oregon Department of Forestry, starting at 2:00 p.m. On Tuesday, July 18th, we'll have our pair of meetings. The work session will start at 9:00, pause for our board meeting at 10:00, and then we'll reconvene the work session afterwards. On Tuesday, July 25th, similar to today, we'll have a work session that starts at 2:00 in the afternoon and a board meeting in the evening, and then at 6:30, excuse me. And then I'd like to announce the first pair of meetings in the first week of August. Tuesday, August 1st, work session at 9:00. The Housing Authority Board of Directors meeting at 10:00. Our board meeting will start immediately following, estimated to be approximately 10:20 in the morning, and then we'll reconvene our paused work session meeting in the afternoon, likely after the lunch break at 1:00. And then on Thursday, August 3rd, we'll have a roundtable starting at 9:00. That will be a full-day roundtable. Okay, do any other commissioners have any other announcements for this evening? Seeing none, I would ask for a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting.
So moved.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor of adjourning tonight's meeting, please vote by raising your hand or saying aye. Thank you, commissioners. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously, five to zero. Good evening, at 9:10 p.m. Good night.